Good afternoon, board members, college staff and visitors. The time is 6:00 PM on this nineteenth day of May 2021. And I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. If I can have Mr. DeGale say the prayer and conduct will you do the pledge of allegiance? Will everybody please rise?
Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and most importantly, your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this amazing community and this wonderful institution. Fill us with your grace as we make the decisions that might affect the students, the staff, the faculty, our alumni, and most importantly, the friends of this institution. And please continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we say, and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of the truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of this community and this institution. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen, and I stand corrected as 2022. Sorry, I missed out on you. Ms. Ramos, can you please call roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Lupita Sepeda?
Present.
Jorge DeGale?
Present.
Jacqui Levent Ramos, present.
Cynthia Marias?
Absent.
Mercury Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Escalanza?
Absent.
Esteban Rangel?
Absent.
Karina Elizondo?
Present.
Ita Cantubera?
Here.
Present, and you have a quorum, and Dr. Henry Calazza?
Present.
Thank you. More of a quorum. Thank you. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notes that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. So we'll continue with the approval of the minutes for the regular board meeting of April 28th.
We're going to have a motion.
Second, I have a motion by Mr. Martinez. I have a second by Mr. DeGale and Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? Non-er, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item we have is public testimony. And we do have several people to speak on public testimony. Before I call them to the podium, I need to read some of the information. An individual's comments to the board shall not exceed three minutes per meeting. When there are six or less speakers scheduled, the board president may extend each speaker's time to five minutes. Time cannot be ceded from one speaker to another. The board president may also limit the total amount of time for public testimony, but not to less than thirty minutes. The speaker may not speak on personnel or student matters that refer to individuals by name or title. After a speaker's comments, the board president shall make whatever response, if any, or take whatever action, if any, is deemed appropriate to handle the matter. Such response or action may include the following: referring the matter to the college president for action or for further recommendation; referring the matter to a later meeting or to a board committee for further discussion or study; indicating that the matter shall be taken under advisement. If the board president determines that a person has not attempted to resolve a matter administratively, the person shall be directed to the appropriate policy for attempted resolution before bringing the matter to the board. The first person that I have is Joanne DeOyos.
This is my daughter, Sandra DeOyos, one of the reasons why I'm here today. Thank you, everybody, for your time. And here is a member of the healthcare community and a mother of three. This is why we're here, for the kids of our future. The city of Laredo, on their publicly shared data on the website, shows that Laredo obesity is an epidemic. Seventy percent of males here are overweight. Seventy-two percent of females are overweight. Thirty percent of our primary school children are overweight. Mexican-American children, as my daughter is, are twice as likely to become obese than any other group. Laredo has a disproportionate rate of diabetes. The last time I spoke, the LCSC website posted celebrating multiple years of having athletics here for the pride of the student body. Now you have one page on esports. Esports. Your homepage still includes "What is Student Life at LC?" That same website still says "Student life is an integral facet of the college experience", and LC offers a variety of activities to engage the mind, body, and spirit. That same website says "Student life includes a popular intramural sports program, nationally recognized intercollegiate athletics program for men's and women's tennis, men's baseball, women's volleyball, and women's softball." In fact, LC is home to the five-time division men's tennis national champions. That's on your website. But you go to athletics and you have esports. The benefits of education athletics, they're not even tangible, and I think that's why we're here today. It's really hard to show our way. It's really hard to show the impact on society. It's really hard for us to give you something tangible for you to walk away with and say, "Budget this." But we know this attracts more admission applications. We know it gives you name recognition and visibility, and we know it builds character. We have multiple studies that have been done over many, many, many decades. Creation of role models comes out of athletics, keeping kids active, tackling isolation post-pandemic. It improves relations within the community. It brings people to Laredo. We only have LC and Tami U. And I'd just like to end with a quote, "There are only two options regarding commitments. You're either in or you're out. There is no such thing as life in between." And that's how we seem to continue having this conversation. And it is really sad that in such a city of this size that we're having this conversation, if we don't give our kids something positive to do, they'll find something negative to do. So I appreciate your time, and I hope that we are not here as a formality, and you've already made your decision, and you've done away with athletics, because it's the intangibles that you're going to see in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DeOyos.
Come on. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alejandro Montante.
Good afternoon, board members. I have transcripts of some videos. Do you mind if I pass them around? My name is Alex Montante. I am also here in support of athletics. I am an alumni of Laredo College, and I am a small business owner here in the city. And... I'm going to show you a couple of videos from community leaders such as yourselves in support of athletics as well. The first one is going to be Sashi Baswani. Everybody knows the owner of Laredo Heat. The second one will be Jesse Gonzalez, County Commissioner, Region One. When we get this to work.
Hi, Sashi Baswani here. Hi. Hi, Sashi Baswani here. At the Great Performance of Athletics in Laredo, I was very disappointed that Laredo College could have expanded all athletics in March. Last year, though, it's May 19th, the staff on the agenda, and I would love and plead for the board members to bring back athletics at Laredo College. Athletics, education, everything is important, but don't throw us out of sight. It is a very important part of the student experience, and we need that coming back. Thank you.
That's pretty good, I don't know if you heard, but you have the transcript in front of you, right? Second one is Mr. Jesse Gonzalez.
Hello, I'm Jesse Gonzalez, your local commissioner for Region One. And this message is in the word of our trustees for Laredo College. I'm advocating to see if you would reconsider and implementing, re-implementing the sports program in Laredo College. We all went in Laredo's building of sports, and as children, we all grew up playing the baseball, soccer, any type of sports, volleyball. You know, throughout high school, we always compete, not only in the sports aspect, but we also compete with scholarships. A lot of the times, our sports academics, but also our sports officers, you know, choose a college or university of our liking. What we want to do as Laredo leaders, we want to make sure our future leaders have somewhere to go and have a base, and that is Laredo College. So we have a program called the State Department that focuses and emphasizes on sports, but we want to make sure we're able to give scholarships that they can go to LC and have their basics and go into some programs like nursing programs or other programs that you guys offer, and excel from there, but also take advantage of the sports. So I ask you, I urge you to consider and re-implementing the sports program back into Laredo College, and remember that Laredo, as the town that it was and now a bigger city, is all about sports. Thank you for your time, and of course, every decision is very important, and we, more than anybody here at Commissioner's Court, know how hard it is to balance a budget. And sometimes we think, and we know, that academics is way more important than sports, but we know how important sports is, it is in our opinion as well. So it is a very difficult decision, and I respect each decision you will make individually. But we know that where there's a will, there's a way, and we know how to research for extra funds and grants, either federal or state, or how to balance our budget differently, how to prioritize our different programs, and maybe leave a little bit of room for sports. Thank you for your time, and I do respect your vote.
That's it for me. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. The next person is Esther Fidora.
Hi, good afternoon. Esther Fidora, for the Record Business Owner, Constituent, and Taxpayer, former LC student and athlete. We're here to also present the video of two of the... We have several videos, but we picked these to talk to you and let you know how they feel about the athletics program. Then I'm going to present some numbers to you, and hopefully this will help you kind of get where we're coming from. Thank you. The first one I'm sure you will recognize, because you will introduce yourself.
I'll translate that for you and give that to you in the transcript as well. Yeah, we did.
Hi, Andy Sayer here. Former national champion, twice national champion for Laredo College, former quarter American for Laredo College, too. When I graduated, University of North Carolina Award, I also was a quarter American both years. I decided to come back to Laredo. I also won three national champions with Laredo College as an assistant tennis coach with Coach John Juan. I was very sad to hear that the college decided to get rid of all the sport back in March. It's a very sad news, not the right decision for the board members. But I know that this coming May 19th, the board members are going to do their part. They're going to do what's right, and they all want to vote to get all the sport back. They should not do this to this community, to the college. The right decision to get all the sport back. Sport is well needed in college as a former athlete, as a former tennis player, college tennis player, professional tennis player. There's nothing wrong to keep the sport and decide to keep the sport. So I encourage the board members to do what's right. Thank you.
Okay, we also wanted to give you an update. We have almost 10,000 signed in our petition, and our petition is going to keep going because we want to get a good feel, but obviously, 10,000 signatures already say enough. I do want to let you know that just real quick, we have a Laredo College athletic program budget that was presented for 19, 2019, and 2022, with the total amount of expenditures for the all five sports of $1,789,716. We also have a report for the allotted budget amounts, which started in 2018, and we went ahead and concluded it 2022 and 2023. With all sports programs available, it still did not exceed $1,623. Unfortunately, we also reviewed the ad hoc report that they were given, members that were included in the ad hoc, and they were told that it would be $2.7 million of cost that would be for the athletic programs. Obviously, this information was incorrect, and we wanted to just clarify the numbers. The numbers did not exceed $1.623 million. Worst-case scenario, it would be $179 if you would include all sports. We thank you for the time, and we ask you to please reconsider and to bring sports back to Laredo College. We have 10,000 of your constituents and taxpayers that are requesting this, and we will continue our efforts, but we thank you again, and we hope that you do the right thing and bring sports back to our community and our Laredo College. Thank you. Thank you. Next person is Juan Gammis.
Hello, my name is Juan Gammis. I'm a resident of Laredo. And I also worked for many, many years, forty-one years, two months and four days at the local bank. I won't mention the name, but I'll just say initials, IBC. But anyway, as you know, IBC is always a community-minded bank, and while there, we were... It was in our blood to get involved in things that we may see a little bit different. And sometimes we would lose, sometimes we would make things happen. This morning, I happened to read a Facebook posting by Esther Fidora about our meeting that was going to be held today. And I just had her call, and I was in the chamber, and really, what I witnessed was a group of people there. And this particular meeting that I went to, we were there three and a half hours, I mean, getting away from their particular jobs and just going over for a community-minded effort. And the magic about it is that everything was done in a positive manner. I mean, we were just presenting figures as to... They admit, maybe my debate might have been misconstrued, like Esther mentioned, but the thing is that the figures that... The figures that really stuck in my mind was the supposedly $2.7 million that it took to operate the five sports program, which really, in reality, was 1.6, and that 1.6 was really even inflated, because that was advancing another 15% for inflation. The budget that was given to all the five programs was very well implemented by the coaches. As a matter of fact, two of the coaches were there, mentioned that they had never gone over the budget item. And so that's a plus for those particular coaches that were there. Obviously, I don't know, I don't have all the information that you as board members have in order to make the best decision available to come a rival decision for the community. But what I do know is that my son, he was talented in the sense that he had built baseball society, and he earned the basic scholarship at the LCC. So our family is very, very thankful for the LCC, for giving that incentive, not so much to my son, but other people that have come before him, to seize that opportunity. And speaking of opportunity, have you heard of the company Successories? Successories is a company that makes signs and displays all kinds of memory gems, you know, the famous ones, like, "Of course you want to see, try, try again," and "Time and time don't..." You know, that kind of memory gems. And I have, I bought a poster, about that big screen there, and it says "Opportunity" on top. And it's a picture superimposed from the free throw line to the backboard. And like I said, it says "Opportunity" on top, and in small print in bottom, it says, "You're going to miss 100% of the shots you take." I mean, I know that you all have this difficult decision to make, but all I'm here is to tell you guys, sports, like the lady mentioned, has a lot of discipline-minded habits that you carry into life, and going back to opportunities, all I'm saying is that keep the kids another opportunity. We crunch the numbers. Hopefully you will.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Let the record show this, Marius has joined our meeting. Thank you. The next person I have is Ramon H. Boerina. Junior, okay.
He had open heart surgery April 1st. He's doing much better. He wanted to be back today, but he didn't make it. So he'll be back in town tomorrow. Basically, I was going to speak whether we came or not. The... Me and him have been texting a lot about stuff and talking about this stuff. Everywhere we go on Laredo, people ask him, "Mr. Doflino, Mr. Doflino, what do you think about the sports? What do you think about the sports?" I think getting tired, people asking him. He has no control. But he... The point that me and him wanted to make today, there's two college regions for sports. Region 14 has 14 colleges, region five has 21 colleges, if I'm right. So that's 35 colleges. Out of all 35 colleges, this is the only college getting rid of the sports program. This college has, out of all those colleges, as near as we can find, this college has the highest tuition and the highest tax rate. But they can't afford it. All the other colleges, most of them are smaller than us. There's very few that are bigger, like El Paso. But that 35 colleges were still doing sports. COVID, whatever, they're still doing sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dovellina. Let the record show Mr. Ryan has just joined us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. That's all I have from the testimony. I'm going to continue with recognitions, communications, introductions of personnel, and new personnel action for the month. I have 5A Laredo College graduation, Ms. Raquel Peña.
Hello, good evening. How are you all doing this evening? Raquel Peña, Associate Student and Channel 9 Coordinator for the Record. Ms. Sepeda, Board of Trustees, Administrators, Colleagues and Guests. I'm here to talk to you guys about our graduations. So last week, we celebrated our 75th Annual Commencement Ceremony, but this time it wasn't ceremony, it was ceremonies. So we had two ceremonies. So I'll be sharing with you the breakdown, okay? So we had a total of 912 graduates walk on stage and they were awarded either with a degree or a certificate, okay? For ceremony one, we had a total of 395 graduates. And the ceremony one was Associate of Applied Science and Certificates, okay? For ceremony number two, we had 517 graduates, Associate of Arts and Associate of Science. Obviously, this event could not have been possible without the assistance of every, almost every employee here on campus, okay? So I want to give a special thank you to our faculty, the Office of the Register and Admissions, the Office of Student Life, the Community and Media Relations Office, Campus Police, Physical Plant, Print Shop, LCTV and Media, Enrollment and Management and Student Success Division, Dual Enrollment Division, Library, the Learning, or Learning and Richment Center, Strategic Recruitment Office, Purchasing Office, Accounting Office, and all the staff that was part of the Usher team, the Program Distribution Team, and the Graduation Card Team, okay? Lastly, thank you Board and thank you Laredo College Administration for your continuous support and all that you do for our students. So thank you all very much.
Thank you for all the hard work that your team did there at the graduation.
This is the best time of the year for us. This is what we work for year round, to see the students walk on stage, receive their degrees, having them be successful and some of them will continue, others, they're ready to start working. But all the hard work, just seeing their expression pays off.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
I'd like to ask Mr. Ryan.
Yes, ma'am, I just want to go ahead and commend staff. It was a beautiful graduation and like you said, you know, seeing those kids with a smile, not even kids, you know, all people of all ages. And then the shocking part for me were so many high schoolers getting a degree or a certificate before they even graduate. It's kind of, it's very, it's very beautiful to see that. Rewarding especially to parents and everything. And I think Ms. Vela, I was right next to Ms. Vela and she told me, and it's very true, the most beautiful part is whenever, whenever it's over, staff walks towards the hallway and yeah, and says, you know, congratulations. And I guess they feel that this is what we, this is what we're doing. So and Ms. Vela was telling me that she remembers those times and that it was very rewarding for her. So I understand what you mean that this is the best time for you guys. So congratulations to everybody, from the classified staff to the professors. Congratulations on your all's hard work.
And I had mentioned, this is probably one of the only events that literally every single person on campus contributes. Whether they're there basically when we're doing the ceremony or they're working behind the scenes, getting us the requisitions, you know, oh, change this, you know, edit this, edit, you know.
I saw everybody going left and right and very well organized. So congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
It was enjoyable. That was the longest.
Chair recognizes Dr. Carranza.
It was the longest. You couldn't go home. Some left, some did go, but I stayed through it and, oh, it was, but it was beautiful. It was well put together and I think, even though it was split into, that's how it should be anyway. It was great. You did an excellent job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item is 5B Introduction of Personnel, Personnel Action. Dr. Marisol Odeas Dejirina.
Marisol Odeas Dejirina, Interim President for the Record. We have six, no, five employees that we want to recognize. Michelle Lee Mendosa as an administrative teacher at Camilo Prada Center. Amanda Rosco will be our Faculty Secretary for the Camilo Prada. Cassandra Reyes, our Faculty Secretary for the Allied Health. Gladys Sepeda, our Teacher Assistant for the Camilo Prada. And Stephanie Moreno, our Teacher for Camilo Prada.
Welcome. Thank you. The next item is number six, Faculty Senate Report. Cash Masahani, is he on? Mr. Masahani, are you there?
Yes, they just haven't enabled screen sharing. Okay, thank you, sir, for the delay there. I'll make this report quick. I know that the agenda, there are many items. So again, thank you for allowing me to present my faculty or our faculty's report for this afternoon or evening. I just wanted to spend a quick moment, I know we are reaching the time where our interim president will return into the provost position. And I just wanted to extend a sense of gratitude from our faculty on the many different initiatives that Dr. Marisol Odeas Dejirina has spearheaded here at the institution along with working with the board in terms of the COVID protocols, professional development opportunities, the tuition incentives, the Center of Teaching Excellence, the bonus payment, and many other opportunities that a faculty and staff and students had as a result of her leadership and working with you all in terms of the board. So I do remiss if I didn't speak on, speaking on behalf of the faculty to thank Dr. Marisol Odejina for her efforts, not only to keep us safe, working with you all as board members, but also to keep us thriving. And so thank you, Dr. Marisol Odejina, for all of those opportunities and for stepping up and serving as our president during that time. I know that the president or the Board of Trustees is looking to work in moving the SO finals and on behalf of the faculty, I just wanted to congratulate the SO finalists. If it is the will of the board to move forward with that candidate later this afternoon or evening, then it is our message as faculty that we look forward to working with the candidate to further expand our mission here at the college. On another note, I know that the, we have been working with the Student Success Committee and I just wanted to update the Board of Trustees. So I just want to know that we do have a team of faculty this summer attending what's called the Teaching Professor Conference in Atlanta. That'll be in June 3rd and some of the, some of the education that those of us that are going will be receiving includes teaching strategies and techniques, things called active learning, participation, improving our grading and feedback, addressing diversity, equity and inclusion, promoting academic integrity, reflections on how we teach and rethinking and retooling, and how to improve our online teaching and how to improve and increase the effectiveness of our learning, our course design, teaching strategies and techniques. And of course, as has been mentioned already by Dean Peña, we were very happy about how graduation came apart, came about in terms of the two different celebrations. This is the team of the Faculty Marshals who participated and helped the faculty march into the arena and march out and perform what was called the Faculty Honors Guard. And so special thank you to the faculty, Mr. Randy Gonzalez, Marissa Morris, Selena Martinez, Diana Finoza, Ana Luramitas, Juliana Kelly, and Adriana Gonzalez and myself. So we just wanted to thank the administration for making this decision, of course, along with the board, to separate those two graduations. And we too think it's an incredible success and enjoy the role that we got to play. And for my part, I will end by saying I really enjoyed being up there and being master of ceremonies for this particular ceremony and hope that I can continue to serve in that capacity for the college. So thank you for the opportunity to make my presentation. I wish you all the best today.
Thank you, Cash. Any questions? Move over to the next item, Associated Student Organization Report. Okay, thank you. Next item number eight, Discussion and Possible Action. AA Implementation and Full Compliance of Texas Open Meetings Act Section 551.127, which authorizes a governmental body to hold an open or closed meeting by video conference call. Ms. Cadi Nakadie, we saw them.
Okay, just to make reference to this item, I requested to formally include this item on the agenda as back in March 31st, I was denied the opportunity to use video conference. Obviously, I mean, the athletics item was on the agenda. I feel very strong in support of that program and unfortunately, I was not given the opportunity or the right to participate in your conference. I know I have voiced this concern before to our legal counsel and to our president and it's not an option. This is a violation of the Texas Government Act and this opportunity or should be given not just to me, but to the rest of the board members. I already requested access. I was given, they were given, they gave me access. But then again, another board member had to connect via phone and that opportunity was not given to them. So I just wanted to put it on the record and make sure that we are in compliance with Section 551.127, not just for me, but for the rest of the board members.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
No? Chair recognizes Mr. Dovellina.
I think, just in all fairness, I understand that it's been set for the record, but if board need a report as far as to these concerns that have been brought up by one of our trustees as far as when she was not allowed to be on Zoom. I understand she was allowed on Zoom or allowed through the phone at the previous meeting, as was Judge Martinez in the previous meeting. But if, I think this board will be apprised of that information if, you know, one of us was not allowed to be on Zoom or any other form of communication during the board meeting.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Ms. Songo.
And just for the record, that has been in effect, it has been a state mandate since September 1st of 2021. And as a matter of fact, only barely last month or, yeah, last month I was available, I was able to connect via Zoom. So I don't think it's fair because it counts as an absentee when we connect via phone. And not only that, but the actual section reads, "While a remote participant is speaking, the person's face must be visible and voiced audible to each participant and to the members of the public in attendance at the physical location." So I just wanted to go through that formality to make sure that we're in compliance and not just to extend this right to me, but to the rest of the board members because the public needs to be able to see our face and we need to be allowed to participate fully and interact in the meeting, not just by phone. Because, I mean, as you all know, sometimes it's hard to hear that discussion. So I just want to make it a point to formally discuss this. Thank you.
Okay, so we don't need to vote on this?
You don't have to vote. But you can, you don't have to.
So it's, it's going to be, we assume it's going to be available to any board member if they'd like to join by, we assume.
You know, I can make some remarks on it if you like, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Mr. New York.
So the Open Meetings Act for years now has authorized video conferencing participation by community college board members and board members for other colleges. The rules changed when the pandemic kicked in and the governor suspended some sections of the Open Meetings Act. It is correct that those suspended sections of the Open Meetings Act were reinstated on September 1st of 2021. And there are some requirements in order to have a member of the board participate remotely by video conference. So you have to have a quorum of board members of the body physically present at one location. If that's in place, then you have to have some technical requirements and include some language and agenda of the board. But yes, that is the law.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Chair recognizes Miss Matisse.
We're through that item.
Yes.
We need to make a motion just so we can be in compliance. Like I move that we adhere to Section 551.127 and being full compliance of the Texas Open Meetings Act of this session. I know that we haven't done it.
But I mean, effective today, it's going to be allowed.
We're a motion.
So she makes motion. So I have a motion by Ms. Songo.
Seven.
I have a discussion. I have a second by Mr. Ryan and Dr. Carranza.
Yes.
Discussion. I recognize Ms. Vela.
I was on the phone and I opted to be on the phone instead of Zoom because I was truly sick and I didn't want anybody to see what I looked like in bed. So, I mean, you know, I think we should have the option of, you know, phone or Zoom.
The phone, Irving.
I don't know, but we also need to remember that that's part of our responsibility. When we're voted in as a board member, our responsibility is to attend meetings physically. Because, you know, over, over COVID that we were doing Zoom, there was a lot of things that, you know, that happened and, and I just, I never felt like I was given the opportunity to view my opinion or, you know, I, it just, it isn't right. It's our responsibility as an elected official and people expect us to come and stay for the meetings.
Chair recognizes Ms. Songo and then Dr. Carranza.
Mr. Murdo, for clarification purposes, what's the requirement of the law? Is it an option or we must? Because the way that I read it here, it says, "The person's face must be visible and voiced audible to each participant and to the members of the public in attendance at the physical location." So, and I know we discussed this last time, we are able to see, they're able to see us and we are able to see or be interactive via internet, that doesn't count like an absentee, right? But what's the requirement of the law? Is it an option or we must be able to show our face?
In order to participate by video conference call in a in a board meeting, you have to be visible by face. So there has to be a setup that that allows that to happen. If, and there also has to be audio present so that folks in the place where the quorum is situated can hear the individual participating by video conference call and vice versa. And if the audio and video or, or, for some reason cease, then, then the member who's participating by video is considered absent for, for that part of the meeting. Uh, so that's, that's the, what the statute.
And then just like to make reference to me, that is coming. I mean, last year we had thirty four regular meetings and social meetings and that's not including subcommittee meetings. So yes, it is our responsibility to, to be here and that's why I'm making sure that we have the, the venues that are warranted by law to be carried out, not only to me but to the rest of the board members.
Dr. Carranza.
Well, you know, I agree with you, Bella, also, you know, and I agree here with Songo, you know. You have to be seen. That's it. I mean, of course, I judge myself, we were here all the time. So it was easier for us, you know, so as long as we were the, you know, what? You know, but other than that, you know, the phone, I can have Jack next to me, you know, and and, and just be talking. So, you know, it's better to be seen because I can keep Jack there with me.
Chair. Chair recognizes Mr. Murdo.
No, no comment on that.
You better not. You know what's true.
You would not have wanted to see me.
Okay, let's get back to the business.
So just really quick. Just really quick, so um.
Mr. Ranghead.
Yeah, so then it's gonna be via Zoom and phone that you could be and it'll count as an, as a, as, as you would have.
And so it's a call, Mr. Murdo.
These sections that we're discussing are part of the Texas Open Meetings Act and there is a right that you have as board members to attend by phone. Uh, and there's also right by video conference call, which we've been discussing. I think that the key that you could focus in on in the video conference calls is there has to be two-way video and two-way audio the entire time. So uh, if, for example, the board members attending by video and the screen goes blank, well, that, that's not complying with the statute that's or if the, the, the audio is muted, that would violate this section of the law. So it has to be two-way video and two-way audio the entire time. That you're participating by video conference.
So then phone won't be present.
You can call by phone, but you get uh, you're absent.
You're absent.
You can vote, but you're considered absent. Is that correct?
Yep, almost. The, you're, you're considered absent only for the purpose of counting the number of meetings you have attended during any given year. And the reason that you would want to make that count is that the law requires you to attend at least fifty percent of the, the regular meetings held. And if you don't attend fifty percent of those meetings, then you're subject to being removed from office. So there's some significance to it, but it's a very narrow slice. Uh, if you participate by phone, you can vote, you can listen, you know, deliberate and so forth. It's only absent for purposes of that statute.
And I think we need to consider also is we gotta make sure you have good internet connection.
Yes.
Wherever you're at.
Yes.
Because if you don't, then you won't be able to listen in or we won't be able to see you as well.
Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna call for a favor.
Aye.
I, I, any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Ms. Matis.
If I'm in order, I'd just like to move all items eight C, nine A, nine B, get them out of the way so people don't have to wait for us because we're gonna examine.
I have a motion, I have a, by Ms. Matis, I have a second, by Mr. Ranghead. Any discussion, none heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So eight C, approval of regular scholarship, matching funds asked for donor request, the Sari Pampa.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Director of Administration, Administrators and guests. For the record, Salicia Pampa, Director of Donor Relations and Social Projects. I come before you today um, to request your consideration and approval for a request by a donor who is interested in establishing a new, uh, new scholarship for Laredo College. This particular scholarship will benefit United Independent School District students who have graduated through their quantum career and technical education uh, program. One of the requirements for this scholarship is for the students to transition to Laredo College and to also follow a career technical uh, program here at the college immediately after high school. The scholarship amount to be provided by the donor is five thousand dollars. Uh, the idea is for it to be a recurring uh, scholarship amount yearly. And the donor is requesting a yearly cash match of the equal amount. Uh, we do currently have matching funds available to meet the scholarship through the scholarship matching fund account. And I would like to point out that this particular matching fund account is not, is a restricted non-GEO operating fund, in case anybody gets nervous about, oh my God, we're using GEO on this map, we're not. Uh, so basically what I would like to request from you all is just your approval so that I can move forward with the documentation and we can have a greater opportunity for our students to continue their education through our college.
Second. Motion to approve.
So I have a motion, by Mr. Ranghead, I have a second, by Mr. Legado, any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye, job, ma'am.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is nine A, enrollment update for Sandra Alopus.
Good evening, Board Members, L C Administration, meeting attendees. For the record, my name is Sandra Alopus and I'm the Associate Dean of Enrollment Management and Student Success and I will be presenting a very brief enrollment update for you. So Monday marked the first day of our main master session. Um, and I am reporting that we have a ten percent decrease in our headcount. Um, this is the first, well, last year we did experience an increase in enrollment for our main master session. But I want to remind you that we were offering a tuition discount. Um, those funds are not available for our summer session. Uh, this, this time around, I know that Administration is considering offering a tuition discount for the fall semester. So we did have a ten percent um, decrease in headcount. Our official reporting day was on Tuesday. So these are not final numbers, however, um, they're very unlikely to, to fluctuate, you know, too, too much. So for main master, again, about a nine percent overall uh, decrease in uh, headcount, semester credit hours and contact hours. For summer session one, um, I want to compare where we are um, based on where we were last year. So when we look at this time um, last year, we do have a six percent increase in headcount for summer session one. Uh, in semester credit hours, uh, we are reflecting a six percent increase and contact hours, eleven percent increase as well. So we are, we still have a long way to go when we look at the final figures uh, for summer session one. Um, when we look at the totals in headcount, it's about a nineteen percent decrease overall. But again, our first class A for uh, summer session one is June sixth, so we still have uh, you know, several or a few weeks left uh, to be able to recruit students for our summer session one. For summer session two, uh, we are looking at a four percent decrease um, in headcount compared to where we were this time last year. Um, and then overall totals for headcount, we're looking at a forty nine percent decrease as well. So um, again, we do have a payment deadline coming up next Thursday on June second. Um, and I assure you that our financial aid team is working very diligently to contact students who are still pending documents to complete their financial aid. We want to ensure that those who have already made an intent to register and enroll here with us, that they're able to um, keep that registration. And so we have been calling uh, as of last week. Uh, we've, and actually before then, um, just trying to make sure that those students that are registered for summer one, those are the ones that we're prioritizing right now. That we call them and to come in so that they can complete their financial aid um, information or we can offer an emergency loan. For the fall semester compared to where we were on the nineteenth day of registration last year, um, we are experiencing a four percent increase in headcount. However, our semester credit hours and contact hours are down. And so what that means is even though we have more students who are registering, they're not registering for as many courses as they were before. And so we've been working with our advising team um, to make sure that we encourage students because research shows that those who enroll full-time are more likely to persist and be successful. So we want to make sure that students understand um, that. Uh, and so we've been working with, with the advisors to, to share that information with our students. Um, as it stands overall, for the fall twenty twenty one comparison, we're about ninety percent down in our uh, headcount enrollment. But again, those, that's overall. So we still have um, roughly two and a half months left in our recruitment efforts. So we'll continue to work um, alongside Dr. Ortiz's team with our marketing team um, to make sure that we can um, you know, recruit more students for these semesters. I also want to share that forty six point eight percent of our enrollment for fall is online only. Um, so this population of students is only registered for online courses and not taking, you know, any face-to-face courses. Twenty seven point eight percent of our total fall enrollment um, is enrolled in a combination of online and face-to-face courses here at Fort MacIntosh. That is where our highest enrollment is. For continuing education, we will be wrapping up our quarter three um, in at the end of the month. And so as it stands today, we do have a six percent decrease in enrollment. Um, however, we still have two weeks, about two weeks left and I know we have some courses that will be beginning next week. So our recruitment efforts continue. The five um, subject areas with our highest enrollment are criminal justice, import-export management, child development, transportation, materials and accounting. And that's all I have to report tonight. Do you have any questions?
Chair recognizes Songo.
I just wanna say that we had a job fair, a college and job fair this past week. And I want to commend um, Laredo College because they participated. We had a total of ten tables. That means ten departments were represented. Uh, it was the first annual ninth grade um, college and career fair. And it was, it worked over, it was over three days. So uh, Laredo College, and we did it by telling you, just wanted to know what happened. They were out of town. So um, I mean, I'm fair with everybody. Um, but uh, the students were very happy to see the college and being able to be there and ask the questions, going to go visit with the different departments. And the teachers, the faculty members, they gave up that day because they were, they're already on, on their, their contract has already finished for the, for the year. So they were there, they spent uh, two hours with us for all of the students from eleven in the morning to one o'clock in the afternoon. And they visited a total of over five hundred kids that they saw. So I'm very grateful to Mr. Dr. Ortiz, uh, yourself and everybody else that had a part in it because it really uh, shined out for our students and really that's all we're doing for it. We're doing it for the kids so that they can be aware of what the college has to offer post uh, high school. So thank you so much. And I know everybody contributes, just like Dean Benya said right now. Um, it, it all comes together from a big group of people. So thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Songo.
Well, first, is there any efforts that are being made to increase enrollment numbers for this fall semester? For the fall semester, yes. I know that our administration is currently um, looking at the use of some of her funds. Um, monies that we might be able to use for the fall semester so we can offer tuition discounts again. Great. And I remember last meeting, uh, you all had noted that you're going to do like an outreach within the campus to try to get those students to enroll for the next semester. Has, did you all do that?
Um, outreach as far as.
Reaching out to students, because I remember that you have, you guys have noted that uh, you were, you're gonna do like an initiative to reach out to students within campus to ask them to bring, not to enroll for the next semester.
Those efforts are being led by Dr. Ortiz. Um, but we have been participating and we have had several um, events scheduled with the, the high schools um, that we've had presence there and connecting them back to our registration and enrollment offices. Um, and, and but yes, those efforts are still continuing throughout the summer. Awesome. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghead.
Hi, uh, first of all, congratulations, great work. Um, so we're, we're planning on using uh, the money, the heard money to be able to to do tuition discount. Are we also gonna look into doing the, the paying out of the balances? Are we doing both or is it just gonna be, I know that you brought it up to us uh, several times. Um, you know, in the finance committee meeting, but have we already decided what's gonna be the best option?
Marisol Rodriguez de Hidina, um, yes, uh, Mr. Vela and his team were running the reports and most likely we're gonna be able to do both. Uh, but we'll present at the next uh, regular board meeting and most likely in the finance uh, committee for next month.
So then you'll bring it so we could get approved for, for, for the next month.
Yes, absolutely.
Great job. Good job.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ranghead.
I want to commend you all. Cause I've been after them, you know, when I was here back when we would go visit schools. We really would. And we would go to middle schools. I remember doing that. And it really warms my heart to know that you all are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I know you've been visiting Burmey and Sapata and Gen Hall counties. Thank you so much for everything that you all are doing. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Community College Association of Texas Trustees Annual Conference, Dr. Marisila, for the A S D H I N A.
Marisol A S D H I N A, for the record, in your packet, board members, we have the uh, everybody got an invitation to participate and we have two board uh, members that are interested in attending the June sixteen through the eighteen. So I, I want to thank Mr. Ranghead and Ms. Ramos. Uh, for, cause I know you all have a lot going on, but just taking the time to learn more is always very gratifying for, for us. Um, but in here, it just the, the institute will cover one of the registration uh, as a scholarship and the rest there, you'll see estimates of. Uh, and this is one of the conferences that was already proved as per policy. So that's why we're not necessarily voting, but I just letting the whole, uh, it's an informational item for you all to, to know.
Thank you.
So for the, the approval of the travel, do we need to? No?
So in the last board meeting, um, the policy was updated and certain conferences to be approved. Um, and this was one of them.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
So a clarification on that, because it went to the policy committee. So we, what we did is we laid out the conferences that were available and notification of the uh, to the board of who would be attending and what was the conference that was being provided. Uh, therefore we put it under information items. If there happens to be a conference that uh, any one of us wants to go, but it's not on the list, then that would require the boards to approve. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. So I'm gonna go back to eight B, reinstating and or adding one or more sports to the Laredo College Athletics Program. Possible closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. Mr. McCreary, Martinez.
I want to make a, a motion to reinstate uh, a uh, program dealing with uh, four uh, sports that were originally approved by the board and then later on was canceled. And uh, I had reference to the soccer team that was uh, very, very popular in uh, this college because it frequently made uh, the, the uh, finals, so to speak, in uh, and, and, in, in the community college program and was highly, highly respected and highly recognized statewide as one of the better teams, Laredo College. The other two programs. The other two programs that I would like for this uh board to formally recognize and approve is the. The uh, the volleyball program. For their, it was a very active, very, very, very much involved program by the, by the women. And uh great participation. And then the, the other two are basically the tennis program. Because it actually is a program that brings in both uh the, the young men and the young women. To participate in this program. Uh the main reason why is because in addition to the uh. Instructional program that we actually have, which are the classes. Students need to be actively involved in a, in our curriculum. Students need to have physical involvement, and this at least would be the beginning. And at least uh some area in which they can participate and get involved in the college. And uh I would propose that presumably, uh and I know that we have had. Um previous presentations by, by administration, particularly more so Mr. Vela in reference to the funding. But we do have a very strong fund, uh or fund balance, I should say. It is in excess of thirty percent, and there's no reason why we should not have access to part of that. So that we can actually be able to finance and be able to have this particular program. This would at least be hopefully the, the beginning. And there's no reason why we should not later on consider the possibility of adding additional sports to the curriculum of this college. And this is my motion, Madam Chair.
I say again.
So I have a motion, Mr. Martinez, and I have a second by Ms. Elizondo. Uh discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I commend this motion, Judge, um but I think one of the items that we're forgetting and one of the conversations that we had. For these past years, let's remind ourselves where we suspended sports for. We suspended sports because of COVID. Back in twenty twenty, it was the right thing to do. Uh and I commend this entire board for making that very tough decision. And I know Chairwoman Cepeda voted against it. But we also have to remember when we came, when it came back. What were the problems that existed with this athletics program? What was the information that was provided to us by this administration over what the issues were with sports? Now, don't get me wrong, I am not in any way saying that there should be no more sports here at the college. I believe there is wholeheartedly a place for sports, but we also have a responsibility to make sure that we do it the right way. We also have to make sure that it's for the community. The data that presented to us is not for the community when over seventy percent of the students are not even from Laredo. A, a, a small portion of the students, or I should say a large portion of the students were failing their LC grades. If we cannot provide the economic cost of this institution for our students, especially if they're playing sports, which is an extracurricular activity. Then what exactly are we doing? And lastly, how much are we spending? Where are we getting the money from? Because there's numbers, several numbers have been thrown around from seven hundred and fifty thousand to one point two five, to one point three. To one point five to two million to two point seven. We all know based on the information that's been presented, that we do not have that money. I respectfully disagree that we get the money from the fund balance, because I think that's something that. With all due respect, you yourself have said we need to be very healthy and we cannot touch. And we cannot touch, as stated by Mr. Vela, to fund recurring programs for that. I think that is a wrong approach. I think we need to bring sports back, but I also think we need to be smart about how we do it. If we're gonna do it, we can do it slowly but surely, bringing it back. But going directly to try to bring all these sports back, I think it's gonna be a big disservice to this institution and most important to this community. Because just like several people in the public have stated, they are taxpayers. We also have a responsibility to those taxpayers. We cannot be throwing and spending the money around just as we see fit. We have to be conscious of that. We have, we have a fiduciary duty to this community. And if sports has a place here, which I wholeheartedly believe that it is, we need to make sure that we change that program that it's gonna benefit this community. So, I mean, I, I recommend to my colleagues that we definitely consider these options. Because of the fact that we need to make sure we make the right decision. If this type of business plan was brought by a small business owner here. The bank would laugh in our face. There's some people in this board, some individuals on my colleagues here that are very successful in their businesses. The banks would not approve this. No one would lend us money for that. But, thank you.
Dr. Can I answer?
Well, I don't know, after all that talk, where do I start? You know, the thing here is that uh. I go with the community. I don't, I don't go with all this rhetoric that was put out there right now, you know, but a lot of it's correct. But the thing is that, you know, cut it down short, so we can understand basically what's on the walk, that's what we are now on the walk side. Here, talking to the community, I, I appreciate all the signatures that are coming in. But I'm not too much into signatures because a lot of them cannot be the real thing. But I am into the real things, uh citizens out there, the business people that I talk to, and the people that call me. Where is the money? Well, it's the taxpayers' money, it's not our money, just exactly what you, what I told you the other day. It is the taxpayers' money, and if they want sports, they should get sports, but also. They're willing to, for their students. The students come first, sports come second. Sports is a given thing to for a lot of students to get ahead, but it doesn't, it does not always happen. But right now, I hear a lot of jumble, jumble over here, but that's okay. I can live with that. But we should at least have one or two teams at the most. But according to the law, we cannot have either. You know, because it'll, it'll take a while before we can get enough monies to have at least two teams or three teams. But we can come up with one team, maybe two if we push it hard, pero that's about it, and what programs are we gonna cut? If we don't, if we don't go into the cookie jar. That's what we gotta look at. But I'm all for sports, I've always been for sports. But I also listen to the people outside, and they all for sport. Now they're, they have awoken. Now they know there's no sports for Laredo College. Before, it used to be a joke. Now is, now that they see the truth, they don't wanna buy it. They say, why are you doing this to your kids? Our kids need a, they, they need, they need another outlet for a lot of these kids to get up there, to get up, to get ahead. Not everybody's a business woman or man, not everybody's a nurse. So we gotta look at other things, and some of these people do play minor leagues, minor, a lot of, there's a lot of other teams like the Heat and all that that do pay. So yeah, let's go for sports if we can. Of course, we'll take this into executive session if we want on it, but the deal is, I agree with Mr. Martinez. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Okay, I just want to remind this board that back in December nine, when we discussed this, um our president, interim president, did note. And stated that we have the money. It was just a matter of how we want, how do you all want to spend this money, right? So as for administration, there are funds available, and also as of this day, we continue to charge the student activity fees. For softball and soccer. So even though we do not have those sports, we continue to be chartering students for that. So just wanted to remind the board and make reference to the president's note that there are funds available. It's just a matter of how we wanna spend them, and I believe that uh Judge Martinez's motion is a public purpose-driven motion. And I think that we have heard numerous times, and I mean, we have been discussing this for over a year, pretty much. So I think, I mean, we continue to go back and forth, and I think at this point, it's like whether. Like Ms. Ollios mentioned at her public speech or a citizen's comment, is that a matter of commitment? Are we are committed to our community or we're not? Like, like they said, status or no status? We can go back and forth, so at this point, I think that um if Madam Chair, if you could please cover the votes.
I have, I haven't talked. I, I don't think everybody has finished.
We're not finished.
So uh Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
You know, there's several things that are really, really concerning. One of the things is the cookie jar that Dr. Carranza and. Madhuia were referring to, we can only touch that one time, and that's to be used only for an emergency. So, great, we use it now. What happens next year? We can't use it again. And you know, it, it hurts me, it really does to do away with sports, it does. But we have to really look at our mission statement. You know, we can't afford it. If all of these, you know, all these people that have come and, and they're for sports and they're for this. Instead of, you know, all of that energy that's being funneled in there. If that energy would go out and go find money for us to do it, we'll be glad to bring it back. The bottom line is, there's no money. So instead of complaining, instead of, give us money and we'll do it. We'll talk, but we need money. What happened to the money? Look at enrollment. Yes, the students are paying services, the activity fees. Obviously, it's not enough. We can't cover the cost involved. There's no way. And so i- i- it hurts, it really hurts, and it's been. This has been going on for not one year, it's been going on for two years, over and over and over again. You know, we can't afford it. Find us the money and we'll do it. Go out there, you, you think you can get us the money? Go get it and come back to us, and we'll bring it back.
Chair recognizes Ms. Vela.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um I commend the judge for, for putting this item, and, and it's a very touchy item. You know, the community has, has, I believe, contacted pretty much all of us. Um I do feel that uh we're putting the wagon before the horse with this. Uh we have to think about timeline. Are we gonna, you know, if, if it happens, do we have the athletes to start? Uh have we already registered for what games are gonna play? Have we already practiced? There's so many different types of, of, of situations that we're in such a short timeframe. I'm a huge sports fan. I love sports. I think it's, it, it's, I, I would, I would wanna bring it back. But I think the other thing is, we have to consider that, you know, we're getting a brand new president. And we cannot, we cannot put a huge speed hump right before she even starts. So she needs to be able to come in here, evaluate, and be able to see, can we be able to do this? Now she needs to give us her master plan of what's gonna be her, her, her expectations of bringing back. Traditional students and doing all that. So hopefully, she can come back and say, you know what, we have a plan. We could be able to do this, but we cannot cripple her before she even begins. And I feel that doing this is putting her in a very bad situation with staff. With the community, with the board, and I don't think it's fair for her. And we're pretty much putting her to fail because she has not even come in here. And if we vote yes today, right now, she's barely gonna start, you know, in a couple of weeks. So I just feel that we're, we're, we're gonna, we're just gonna cripple her, and it's not fair for her. And, and uh I, I feel that we should allow her to evaluate, assess. Look at the, this, the, the, the program, and if she comes back and says, you know what? I got some donation money from X amount of, of, of people. I have half a million dollars, I have a million dollars, you know, maybe we could squeeze them back in, whatever she could come back. But I think we need to allow her to do that. That's my opinion, and those are my two cents. Again, I not against it at all. But I just feel that we need to be able to, to allow her to do an assessment on this.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez and then Ms. Ramos.
I do not believe that we are putting our new incoming president in any kind of a challenging position. On the contrary, uh this would be a test case, so to speak, uh to analyze exactly the success. Has this uh particular implementation of these new uh sports has had it. Uh an impact, a positive impact, or it has not? Be that as it may, there is, I know that uh Dr. Carranza and then as well as Ms. Vela. Make reference to the cookie jar. Let me put it to you this way. We have a very strong, and I mean very strong, cookie jar. No ifs, buts about it. That's one of the reasons why this college has a triple A rating. And I personally was very much involved in building up this uh cookie jar, if, if I, I make reference to it. I was very much in monitoring that. Actually, we have a several million dollars worth in, in excess of thirty percent. Of the budget is in fund balance, actually closer to thirty-five, thirty-five percent. You, you may challenge me on that, Mr. Vela, perhaps, but we certainly do have over thirty percent. And uh be that as it may, this board did make a motion that under no circumstances. Should we ever come down lower than twenty percent, that would be the ceiling. So we do have to have margin in here where we can have access to some of these funds, and at least this would be a trial year. And uh let this trial year see, did it have a positive acceptance with the student? Was it successful? Was it uh, did it have a, a, a positive image? With uh not only the, the students, but also with the community, all right, right now, and I agree with uh. What has already been acknowledged. Originally, it was canceled completely because of uh coronavirus. That, we all owed it, and we were unanimous. Okay, but that gradually has uh, the situation has had a change in it. And I think we, uh there's ways in which with proper precaution, with uh proper conditions implied. Or assessed to the students that will be involved, there's no reason why we should not be able to. Bring in this particular, some of these programs in it, and at least it would be a beginning. Let it, let it, if, if this uh does not make a, a good start. Well, then, then perhaps uh next year, well, it'll be something else. But at least it's going to be a program that will be offered to the students. For them to participate physically in some of these sports. And that's, that's my, my observation, or that's my, my feeling in reference to this particular uh motion that I have presented here.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
Thank you, Ms. Vela. So I, I commend, first of all, I commend the tenacity and the persistence that Dr. That I, I commend uh the tenacity and the persistence that you have. I, I, I consider you a mentor. I consider you one of our individual board members that has been here with a lot of knowledge and a lot of information. But I've told you before, eh, there's come the time and place when I do my research, I find out what needs to be done. And I bring it to the table, and that's what I've been doing. As a board member, you know, since I started here, I do my due diligence. And I'm an elected official, just like every single one of us. We work as a team together. And when we look at the things that we have to look at, sometimes they're not happy moments. And sometimes they're wonderful moments, but one thing I do say is that. When we, when we go back and forth and we discuss and we, because I'm not gonna say we argue, because we don't, we never argue about these, we discuss things. But I also commend the, the individuals who come to the meetings, who post on Facebook, who put information. And by the way, Mr. Vela, I have never been contacted by any member of the community. So that's odd, that's kind of odd to me, but, but I just wanted to let you know, I have never been communicated or called. And everybody knows my number, it's public, it's available, but I come to tell you that when we meet together as a board. We look at every single little thing. I'm not against sports, I'm against the logistics of it. How are we getting it back? How are we bringing it back? We haven't had kids for two years here. When people say, oh, uh with the kids, they don't have any place to go. Uh, hello, the kids have not been back in sports for two years on campus. These children, these students have signed up for other colleges because they have offered them a, a prospective plan for them to go play somewhere else. Is there a place for them here? Definitely. But right now is not the time. We are going to do a disservice to these students that come to this campus because we don't have housing. It's subpar. I, I would like for you to visit our women's housing. It's dilapidated. It is in a, a building, a structure that we cannot touch until we have enough monies because it's owned by the government. And it's, it's a historical structure. And so, yes, we can address those issues. We've had an ad hoc committee. We met several times. We brought in members from the community. We've even asked the students, what do you want from the students? The students that we have right now, like not right here this, this moment, these are not the same students we had two years ago. Every two years they change. Every two years the perception changes from the students. We're waiting for those students. Now, we're gonna do a disservice by bringing in one, two, three, because you know, you know, that if you don't have a well thought out plan, it, it goes into shamos. And we would do a disservice to our students. We would do a disservice to Doctor Ramírez. Because, yes, I do agree that what I'm doing right now is I'm trying to buy a real fancy car without the money. And, and I cannot do that. In my, in my conscience, I cannot do that. I cannot vote for something that I know that I'm going to regret later on because I would rather wait just a bit. Now, you can threaten me with taking me out of the board. Please do so. Because you know what? I'm, I'm here and I'm, and I'm serving the community free of charge. This is my commitment to the college. The college includes students, staff, faculty, community. If somebody can tell me that I am doing, not, that I'm not doing my due diligence, then I need to hear from them. Because I will not accept somebody threatening me and telling me that they're gonna run against me because they can. Please do so. I have just been reelected for another term and it's a six-year term. I'm here to serve my community. I'm here to do my research. I'm here to work with my federal board members who I love very much because we have been together for quite some time. And so, I'm not here to win a popularity contest. I'm here to make things right and I'm going to, I'm going to vote what I believe is right. And if I vote a certain way, I will also be giving a vote of no confidence to my administrative staff for this college. If I turn around and say, you know what, what your opinion or your facts don't matter to me. So I'm here to serve the public and I'm serving the public as best as I can. And I'm gonna continue to do that and my vote will reflect what I have reviewed, what I have looked at, and what I think our community college needs to continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Chair recognizes Ms. Martinez and then Dr. Carranza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I don't, I don't want to deliver a point too much, but I do wanna echo and deal with the sentiments of some of my colleagues that already mentioned. And again, with all due respect, Judge Martinez, you know, uh, yes, we commend you for bringing it back and being so persistent and so committed. But we all are committed as well. I love sports. I have my grandkids in sports. And I'm a big proponent of sports. But when it comes down to the nitty gritty as to what can you afford, it's already been said. And I know that, uh, Ms. Elizondo brings up the point that we were told that there was monies available. And, and you know, but that wasn't the whole crux of the conversation. It was, you, I mean, there's monies, but you wanna put it in sports, well, guess what? You're gonna have to cut and eliminate other programs and eliminate positions and possibly lay off people. Because there has to be a give and a take. I mean, there's a set of money sitting here that would have to be distributed. You wanna throw it all into sports, well, then we're gonna do, we have no faculty anymore. And so, I agree with the colleagues, my colleagues and, you know, Ms. Ramos and Ms. Vela and, uh, Ms. Vela and you, Ms. Rangin. I mean, this has to be a very strategic plan and it's gotta be smart planning. And, you know, we're, we're looking at the numbers that enrollment is down. And so, you know, for the sports, how are we going to support a program like that? Now it's for the fund balance? Oh yeah, we have a hefty fund balance, but it has its restrictions and its limitations. Isn't that a free for all? Would that matter? Well, we would have balanced the budget out of the fund balance all these couple of years. But it has restrictions. There was a time when we said we wanted to give raises to our faculty. And I think, and I was the one who said, why don't we get it out of the fund balance? Why, we, there's no money, but why don't we get it out of the fund balance? And, and everybody, I was shut down immediately, even Judge Martinez. You cannot do that. There's restrictions, you know, for, for doing that. So why does that not work, the same idea for the, a baseball program? Because again, you, you bring the bar of the money for one year and the subsequent years, you know, what's gonna happen is what happens. It's gonna just deplete our fund and deplete our fund. So we have to be judicious and as a responsibility of, of board members and what Ms. Ramos eloquently pointed out and Ms. Vela as well, we do have a judicial, we do share a responsibility. So we have to walk into it with our eyes wide open and not just think of all poor kids and poor kids, but where are those kids? You know, when we had all those, you know, uh, things happening in the programs that didn't have the grades and et cetera. So all I'm saying is that, you know, we have to sit here and it's a difficult decision, but we have to think of our community, as has already been mentioned, because you have to look at the global picture. As much as it hurts us or may hurt us, whatever the decision's gonna be tonight, my opinion is that we have to walk into this very carefully and strategically. And carefully plan this and strategically carry on. And we talked about it. We said, let's bring maybe one program next year and see how we're doing, maybe two programs. But you know, as we plan, as we set, you know, the foundation for moving, you know, forward within the positive path. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Dr. Carranza?
No, what I was gonna say is that, yes, we don't want the new president to come in with something on her lap, but I was in honor of over three hundred people, or four hundred people, I don't remember it, but sometime a few years back. It probably sold out. But you bring, you get rid of people that cannot do their job and you bring in people where there's a problem. So if this lady comes in and there's a problem, that she has to take care of it. That's all it is. Nothing to it. Any questions on that, Ms. Rangin? You bring in people to take care of problems, basically. And you get rid of that yourself.
Why do you wanna, why do you wanna give a problem right now? There's, there's, the public already has problems and, and certain issues. Why do you wanna put another problem in front of, in front of her?
We don't wanna put her in a bind either.
What has the word doing? She hasn't even assessed the, 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 the program.
Okay, okay. Ms. Elizondo, Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I don't think a lot of people know Ms. Ramirez, Dr. Ramirez. There is no challenges for Dr. Ramirez. I've seen her in action. She has turned around. Tammy U, she has increased student involvement in all dimensions. So to me, this will not be an obstacle for her. And second of all, I wanted to ask what changed since December? We already discussed this and we passed a motion. This board voted to reinstate athletics. Yet administration and March introduces a motion on their own, because it was, it was sponsored by our interim president, to dismantle athletics. So all this discussion has, we already, everything has been said and done. And it was already done in December. And yet administration, for whatever reasons, she, I, I don't know, I really don't understand because we had directed administration in December to bring us a plan. And that plan, instead of slowly reinstating it, as we discussed numerous times, it was like, her proposal was to eliminate athletics completely, when that was not even the option or the directive. So I really don't understand what changed from December to her motion, uh, to her item and march. And, um, also I wanted to ask, uh, Dr. Ramirez. Uh, it is my understanding that there was a promotion made uh, for an individual extending his title to include athletics. I know, but I mean, there's already a staff mem-, okay. Let's forget, I'm not gonna address personnel, but there, I do want to make annotation that there is already an individual who has a title to oversee athletics. So I think at this point, the only matter is to either reinstate athletics or not. Yeah, it's like they put an athletics. So at this point, I think, all right, there's no further discussion.
No, I haven't finished. I don't have a lot of reading to speak. So it's my turn. So, Sessa, Ms. Vela. What are the consequences or what happens if we were to remove money from the fund balance? From our hefty fund balance, like, uh, Mr. Martinez is saying?
Good evening, board members. Sessa Vela, Vice President of Finance for the record. Regarding the, uh, observations made by Ms. Martinez, that is correct. We do have a healthy fund balance. But let's not forget that, that fund balance is spoken for because of the liabilities that we currently have on our books. We do have a liability for the pension plan, uh, to the state and also for the health benefits for retirees. So as, as we presented before, uh, yes, when we look at how much cash is, is available, yes, it's healthy, but then, but again, as I reminded the board, uh, last time is that if the state were to come and say, hey, that payable is now due, you need to pay the state, then we would have, that cash that's available would go towards that payment. In addition to that, we would have to borrow approximately two point five million to be able to cover the whole, uh, liability that we have for this, with the state. Yes, again, when we look at the fund balance without those liabilities, yes, we do have a healthy fund balance. However, it is spoken for in a, in a way that if we ever have to pay that liability, then that fund balance will not exist.
Now, would it be affecting our rating? If we were to?
Yes, that, that is one of the, the impacts of using the fund balance for operations. Uh, again, if, if it is a one-time thing, then we've used the fund balance for equipment purchases or, uh, uh, construction or maintenance. Uh, we've used it for a bonus, uh, or, or for, uh, the voluntary separation plan one time, that's fine. And again, uh, I believe one of the board members mentioned, an emergency, okay, that would be fine. Again, if the decision were to be, okay, we'll use it for a program, to cover the expenses of a program for a year, okay. But the question that we're gonna have, the issue that's gonna come, is the following year is the same situation because those expenditures, which are recurring expenditures, will not be in the budget. So you have to budget for them the following year. So the question is going to be, again, how are we gonna fund them? Is it going to be through taxes, through increases in fees? And again, I know that the discussion is, well, is your money, where's the money? Well, we have a budget of sixty-one million. It's just on how we wanna allocate it.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo. And then just for the record, there is a position for Associate Dean of Student Engagement and Athletics, and athletics to oversee the esports, which is a program that's less than five thousand dollars. So if we're, if there's a claim or allegation that there's no funding available, then we are expanding that title with funds to increase a person's salary to oversee a program that does not exist in a regional college.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Ms. Rangin.
And again, I guess my only concern is just we're putting the wagon before the horse. There's a lot of stuff that needs to happen. And there's a lot of stuff that needs to happen beforehand, you know, training, uh, you know, getting the athletes, uh, you, uh, you know, going to, 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 to see what, what, uh, what, uh, games we're gonna be playing and all this. This is, this could be a good idea. If so, Judge, we, we would decide to do a, 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 a drawdown on, on the fund balance. But allow the president to come in and to evaluate the assess, going back to it. And, and like, you know, Dr. Carranza says, you know, she needs to fix the problem. Yeah, and let's tell her, fix this problem for us. If, if there's, if there's, if, if it's gonna be able to get fixed, but right now, to just pay for the, for, or do a drawdown for the sports, let it be, you mentioned, like sixty different figures, let's just say it's two million dollars. Okay, I just feel that we're gonna throw the money away because there's not the proper, uh, a proper, um, uh, procedures that have taken place so we could be able to, to do it the right way. And to spend two million dollars on, ah, let's see what happens. And let's see if next year, I mean, fine, it's been twenty thousand dollars, but not two million. I just think it's a lot of money, so. Um, that, that's what I think.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. So, all in favor of reinstating and/or adding one or more sports? Who's, who's voting aye? I'm sorry, Mr. Muir?
Are you in favor or against? Are you calling for those in favor?
I'm calling for those in favor. Did you have a question? Mr. Muir?
I was just gonna say, I think the motion is the one that Judge might have.
Right, Judge Martinez.
It specified.
Judge, who made the motion?
And Ms. Elizondo seconded. So, the motion is, all of the whores in favor are bringing it back.
Reinstating?
Bringing it.
Soccer, volleyball, tennis.
Not, not across the board, but, uh,
The sports that you mentioned.
Soccer, volleyball, tennis.
Who's in favor? So I have Ms. Martinez. I have Ms. Elizondo. And Dr. Carranza. Who isn't, who's against? Ms. Phil.
Madam Chair. If I may.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangin.
I do wanna make a motion, and I wanna make a motion that, uh, we allow the president, the new president, to come in, assess, do an evaluation, bring back this item no later than May of next year. She could bring it back if she feels in December, when she assesses in February or whatever, but to bring it back and give us a plan if she, she will decide to, to bring it back. That would be my motion.
Does that motion by Mr. Rangin? Do I have a second? Ms. Ramos asked a question.
Mr. Muir, could we, could we, uh, obligate ourselves right now with this motion before we confirm our, our, our sole finanist? No?
No?
Well.
I mean, it's a given, but I, I'm asking a question because I wanna be ready and I wanna be prepared.
You, you could obligate the next college president to do what Mr. Rangin helped.
So let's say, for example, um, we're, we're getting ready to, to visit on that topic right now. So we can vote on this right now.
Yes, you could, i- if, if the motion were to ask the, the next college president to evaluate, uh, as Mr. Rangin had stated in his motion, the sports, uh, concern, uh, that could be done in the voting room.
So I second your motion.
So I have a, a motion by Mr. Rangin. I have a second by Ms. Ramos. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I see your hands? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Can I see this?
No, no, no.
You're against. So I'm asking for, yeah, for a favor. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I have seven in favor. Against. I have two and two against. Motion passes.
For the record, I voted against because I don't think it's fair that we continue to keep these people waiting for an answer. The, our community, our constituents, might, you might not be getting calls from people because probably they already know what your position or stance is or how you feel about things. But I have gotten hundreds of calls from constituents and, and I don't think it's fair. They have been waiting for so many years. And we're going to prolong it for another one. For just for the record, the reason why I voted against is not because I don't have confidence in our new president because I know she is great and she's going to cooperate as this is. But just for the record, I'm voting against because I don't think it's fair that we continue to leave these people hanging.
And, and just for the record, Ms. Elizondo, I get stopped everywhere, HEB, everywhere. I get calls all the time. I get wherever I represent my boss. I get asked all the time. So it's, it's a lot of us that are getting the call. And I just continue explaining to them where we're at and that I have a fiduciary, uh, responsibility to our citizens. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion carried. So the next item is executive session. And two items that we have is 10A, closed session meeting to discuss the employment contract of the sole finalist selected for a regional college president, Dr. Maria Navas, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. 10B is closed session consultation with the College District Attorney concerning retaining investigator for complaints initiated by the regional college district personnel related to employment contract non-renewals pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. During your motion to go executive, a motion by Ms. Ramos.
Second.
I was seconded by Dr. Carranza, Ms. Vela, and Mr. Rangin. At this time, we're gonna go into executive session. The time is?
Seven forty-six.
Seven forty-six, and the board will turn to executive session. We'll turn to sections 551.071, 551.074. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Jack? Okay.
So we reconvene from closed session. The time is now 8:15 and the board took no action in executive session. Not take appropriate action on the items that we discussed. That chair? Yes, the chair recognizes Ms. Marias.
All right, sorry. No, I defer to my colleague.
Under the Dr. Gonzalez's reading.
The first item.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve of.
Do I need to read it, Mr.?
Yes.
Let me read it. 11A, entering an employment contract to employ Dr. Maria Minerva Ramirez for the position of Laredo College President pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.074. Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees employ sole finalist Dr. Maria Minerva Minita Ramirez as Laredo College President under the terms and conditions reflected in the written contract negotiated by trustee Jorge J. Delgado with the assistance of legal counsel and Dr. Ramirez.
I have a motion, I have a second, by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? Nothing heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. again.
Welcome, Dr. Ramirez. Before I, before we, I guess I'll congratulate Dr. Ramirez. I want to say thank you to Dr. Mariela Beherina. Thank you. You, you sustained throughout a very difficult time and I commend you for what you did. I think that a lot of us, if you weren't in our radar, which I think you still were, but if you weren't, you may, I'm sure that you, we all know the type of, of person that you are and I want to thank you personally because I feel that you did a really good job, honestly. And, and, and you deserve to be praised because of your hard work and keeping the college glued together in very hard times. So congratulations on that, Dr. Beherina. Now to Dr. Ramirez. Welcome and we wish you the very best, Dr. Ramirez. As the board, I believe, you know, we wish you the very best and we can't wait to have a, a, the first female president, which is a great honor. And to have your expertise being inserted into our community, our community here in, in Laredo College.
And the leadership, the leadership that you have experienced.
Recognizes, Mr. Martinez.
In National University that I know you will implement for Laredo College.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
Thank you. So I'm going to begin by welcoming Dr. Ramirez. But before I do that, before, when a person lays the foundation for others to follow, that is a sign of great leadership. We chose you to be able to guide us during my most difficult times because there was more difficult times. Whenever we do change a guard, there is adjustments. And so, um, Dr. Elias Beherina is going to be part of the administrative team that will continue to move this college forward. And to Dr. and I commend you. Thank you so much for being there, for providing us with the direction and, and just being a good leader for us, right? For Dr. Ramirez, you're getting a awesome administrative staff. I couldn't ask for anything better because as a leader, when we come here and we serve the public through our positions as board members, you know, we're looking for those individuals that work together with us, not the kind of individuals that work against us or beyond us or you're counter doing this. This group of individuals that we have here at, and you have them there attending too, right? But this group of individuals, they're triple A rated because they come here to work, to serve the community, to serve the public, but they deal with us also because we have a wide variety of personalities, but at the end of the day, we have one mission and that's the kids. So I welcome you, Dr. Minita, because I know we're going to have a wonderful relationship. We're going to progress, we're going to move forward and thank you so much for applying. And I thank Dr. Beherina also for applying, for giving us this opportunity to learn from each other and to move forward. And thank you and welcome. And I'm ready, I've already rolled up my sleeves and I'm ready to get working. So whatever you need, we are all here to help each other out. Thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Ms. Marias.
Thank you. Uh, due to all the comments, but you know, Dr. Ramirez, you know, yes, heartfelt, you know, welcome to this, to the board, this community here. We've known each other for a long time and so I know the true character of the individual that you are and the personality and as all the qualifications that have been mentioned here before, but more than anything, I think deeper than that is the fact that you care. You care about everything that you do and whatever you undertake. That's a very special component or ingredient that we look for, we were looking for in, in the next leader. Because you have to care, you have to have the compassion for the students and also you have to empathize with your employees because as been said already, they are the greatest, greatest employees in the whole wide world and that is why we're number one, you know, in the nation. So again, welcome, we're happy to have you and look forward to working with you. And Dr. You can hear what can be said, I'm going to start crying, but you know, when new beginnings, you know, when new beginnings come, ends that also have left a lot of warm memories. And those are the more memories that we have. I know you guys will be here, we're not getting rid of you at all, but again, your leadership role was just outstanding and phenomenal. You were that thread, you know, that put everybody together and just try and set the glue. And it took a lot of courage and a lot of strength, you know, to go up against a lot of stuff that had been not in the right things before. And so for you to, to take that challenge and then to make the change, which is even more noteworthy than anything. So thank you for all you gave to this institution and you're going to continue to give it, so thank you. Sorry.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
I just wanted to say, wow, I never seen there's some, so much enthusiasm with the board, especially trying to finally make the motion. So I think that attests to the support that we already have for you, Dr. Minita Ramirez. And I'm very, very excited. I don't know if y'all know, but she actually attended one of the dance recitals and she was already looking, ah, the carcass, that like we need to. And, and all the students, everybody, even though she has been at Tamiu, she has a lot, she knew a lot of students. I was like, well, I really, really warmed my heart to see that instant connection with students. And at the end of the day, that's the reason why we're here. I have no doubt in my heart that you're going to revitalize the college. I can't wait to see students walking across campus and in those aisles. So welcome and you have our support.
Chair recognizes Ms. Ramos.
We were very fortunate that between Dr. Beherina and Dr. Ramirez, the two of you, there's no reason why, and I'm sure that you will, the leverage that each one of you will provide and the kind of background experience that each one of you do have, you will actually represent, continue to represent the college and each actually also will be able to bring this institution to a totally new level. You have, the both of you have your work that I'm not, no. Uh, you have, the both of you have your work that I have no, no question about it. Uh, why? Because unfortunately, we are experiencing a small drop in enrollment. But yet, you personally, I am very much aware, Dr. Ramirez, you were very much involved in increasing the enrollment at TCU. And that background and that experience and that leverage that you used, I'm sure you will be able to provide it to bring in this increased enrollment between the two of you. Uh, as already have been acknowledged by members of this board, there's no reason why you have two exceptional young ladies that are giving leadership to this institution. And you will end up becoming the role models that you basically already are. And I know that you're going to achieve that even more so. So we certainly wish you the very best and we're here to give you the support that you need. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
We asked. Um, no, just want to echo the sentiments and I won't be long. Uh, I don't know. But yes, definitely first and foremost, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for all your hard work, for all your efforts, for late nights, uh, early mornings that you've been getting here, even though I'm sure you've been doing that all those years. Uh, but I think, um, I think from, from my personal opinion and my perspective, to see you over this past year grow into that position and do what it is that you were doing, I mean, on a daily basis. Uh, I'm, for whatever this might mean, I'm proud of you. I'm proud to be a part of this board, especially with, with you as part of the administration and everything that you do, especially because I know that you do it from, from your heart. So, so we love you. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. Of course, we look forward, you're not leaving, but I know you're, you're, you're going to be smiling for these next few weeks bigger than anyone else. Um, but to comment, Dr. Minita Ramirez, just as it was said with trustee Elizondo, there's never been this much excitement here at this institution and not only at the institution, but also with this board because of what it is that you bring to the table. Uh, and I thank the Presidential Search Committee that took part, uh, just as we all volunteer our time, the Presidential Search Committee volunteered their time and efforts to review all the applicants. And you know, at the end of the day, uh, we were left with, you know, the most qualified individual and we are so excited to have you on board. So definitely welcome to the LC family and look forward to, to working with you in any capacity that we can. So thank you.
Ms. Vela?
Oh, okay. Thank, uh, if I don't run out of voice, Dr. Rodriguez DiHernina, I know you and I worked very closely together. I really appreciate everything that you've done for our college and for all our board members. Uh, I know we're still going to work together. I think we're still probably going to harass you once in a while. But thank you for everything that you did. I can't say enough. Uh, our friendship grew as well. But thank you for everything that you've done and you're going to continue doing. Dr. Ramirez, what can I say? Uh, every, I know everything that's been said already. I look forward to working with you as well. And I'm excited. So if you have any words for us, the mic is yours.
If I manage to, real quick, just real quick, just before she, before she, she just, um, to staff. And I don't mean this in a bad way, you know? No, no, I don't. I mean, please welcome Dr. Ramirez with open arms. Help her be successful because her success is your success. So, um, just welcome. I'm not saying anything bad that, you know, people might not like. No, 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 not that. I just, I just want to just tell staff that we're giving you a candidate or the new president that has a lot of knowledge and I've known Minita as well. And she has a great heart and I know she's coming in here with the mentality of making Laredo College a lot better. So just with open arms, you know, I, I hope staff receives her and gives her the welcome that she deserves. That's all.
Chair recognizes Ms. Elizondo.
I love how, how you started. So I'm going to do the same. To staff, I don't mean any, I don't mean it in a bad way. But please, no more hires until she comes on board.
Thank you. It's all yours. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. I feel like I'm in a cave in here. So I want to thank the, all of you, the Board of Trustees, the Search Committee, um, for the opportunity. This is a, a, a very, uh, very much welcomed. I, I know I applied for the position and I know that, you know, I, I overheard some, some rumblings, uh, earlier and, and I took to heart everything you all said about the athletic program and, and, and the plan that you all expect to see in a year. And, and I promise you, we will, we will, between the, the M squared team here, between Maricela and Minita, we're going to figure it out. Don't you worry.
I like it. I like it.
The M squared team and, and all of the entire staff. I, I, I'm so excited. This is, this is, this is the beginning of a huge endeavor to, to not only take a, a number one triple A rated, uh, college of our community, one which I attended, one which I'm very proud of, um, and one which represents the majority of our, our population in this community. Every single family of our community has in one way or another, and in many ways, two and three and four times been touched by this college. Uh, and our responsibility, wholeheartedly, is to continue to provide a quality academic and vocational technical program that not only we can be proud of in here, but that the community is aware of what's happening within the walls of our college. Because I can tell you that when I did my campus tour, thinking that I knew everything about the college, there were things that I learned. And I asked the staff, who knows about this? And they said, oh, everybody. And I said, no, not everybody, because I promise you, I'm in the schools and I'm out there and I didn't know this existed. And so we have a huge task to continue to provide our community with information about all of the wonderful things that are happening, but certainly to take what we've done to another level, as Mr. Martinez said. Uh, to take what our faculty and, and all of our staff are trying to do every single day to another level, to provide them with the, the support, not only in words, but in support. And sometimes that means money. And sometimes that means new programs. And sometimes that means new training, more training and assistance to provide them with the tools they need to be successful. It's not about me and it's not about you. I'm sorry. It's about them. And the work that they do every single day with the students in their classrooms. The students that come into their offices crying because they don't have money, because they don't know where to go, because they're being, you know, they're having difficulties at home because those are the people we're here for. And, and so with that, I want to say, I promise that I will give my hundred and fifty percent of my every single day to this college. And I'm going to ask the staff and the faculty and you to do the same. I, I'm not going to expect people to do things that I cannot do myself or that I won't do myself. I'm going to ask people to reinvigorate their lives with a commitment, a true commitment to what this college is and what it can be. Because I think that together we can really continue to build on something that's great and become greater. We're good. We're very good. But we have the opportunity to be great. And I know that with the help of you all, with your support and certainly with the team being on board and understanding that, yeah, maybe we're going to need to make some changes. But that doesn't mean people are going to lose their jobs. And I want to put that out there right now. That doesn't mean that, that, that people are not going to be listened to. Everybody's going to have a voice and everybody's going to have an opportunity to talk to me. I talk to students, I talk to parents and I talk to staff and faculty. I am a faculty member and I take my credentials very seriously. But I have made a, made a conscious decision, not only as an educator of the state of Texas, but as a faculty member to provide the highest quality of education to everybody I see. And that includes the people that work with me. If I'm not building tomorrow's leaders, even within our own office, then I'm failing as a leader. So you have my commitment, you have my family's commitment. You know that I'm going to do the best that I possibly can every single day. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart and my families for the opportunity to continue to serve the community that I love. Thank you. I may add one more thing before we, I know you have to finish your meeting. But I do want to take the opportunity to thank Maricela, Dr. DiHernina and her staff for, for all of the transitional stuff that we've been going through. We're meeting Monday. We're starting already. I know I don't officially start till July one and, but I'm, we're going to make it work. I promise. We're going to make it work. We're planning the, the transition. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
But don't eat. Don't eat.
Let me finish the meeting.
I want M squared t-shirts.
Uh, the next item we have is L eleven B. Retain investigator for complaints initiated by Laredo College District Personnel related to employment contract non-renewals.
Madam Chair, if I'm in order, I'd like to move. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I motion to approve the law firm Thornton and Thompson as the investigator for complaints issued by Laredo College District Personnel related to employment contract non-renewals.
So I have a motion for Mr. Delgado. I have a second. By Ms. Ramos, any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is President's Reports.
Board members, it's in your packet. And if you have any questions, just let me know or send me the email. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, our next meeting dates are Thursday, June 2nd, 2022 at six P M. We have a budget workshop. And our next regular board meeting will be Thursday, June 30th at six P M. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Ramos and a second by Mr. Delgado. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Picture, 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 picture.
Picture.